Meeting is open at 6:30. We're all here, and is Pam? I don't see her there.
She's that lady in the top-left corner reading a piece of paper. She's behind the paper. She's a bit shy. There she is.
There you are. Okay, and Pam, are you going to stay right there?
She says she has no audio.
Well then, should we wait for her to have audio? Does that mean you can't speak to us, or you can't hear us?
Be able to sign it.
She apparently can hear us, but we can't hear her.
No, she said she can't hear us. I thought I read her lips.
Oh, really? Okay. We're waiting for Pam Harding Barrett.
I just suggested to her that she just restart. It's the modern equivalent to adjusting the rabbit ears.
Pam, I think we're going to go ahead with the opening parts of the meeting. First on the agenda is public comment. I don't really see a member of the public here who make a comment, but if any of you wish to, say something else, something not on the agenda? No, I guess not. Okay, then we'll go forward. Minutes, Bob?
I recommend approval of the minutes through July 13th and July 27th, 2021, as amended. There was minor changes, but they were very well done.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I think we have to say our name and your vote. So begin with John.
Aye.
Druley, aye.
John Druley, aye.
Bob Leary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
Charlotte Harris, aye.
Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Paul Dry, aye.
Okay, for the minutes, all accepted.
Wait a second. We're only doing this because Pam can't speak. Did she vote?
I don't know if she can hear us. Could she hear us?
We're making a special vote.
Thumbs up and down.
Why don't we all do that? It'd be much faster.
Pam, do you accept the minutes? I would take that as a yes. Okay, good. We're going to make a change in the agenda.
Excuse me. I could not see. How did you know what she said?
From the way she put her hand up.
I saw a white piece of paper flash across the screen.
No, she hit her hand at the lower part of the screen.
Excuse me. Okay, I'm not good at reading her signs. Pardon me.
I could be wrong, but that's what I saw.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't need to be unanimous anyways.
Right. All right.
It's a process.
Because of the weather, some things have changed. You might want to know what they are in case you want to leave. We've got continuances. We're going to move to continue. Three items that are on the agenda, so let me tell you about them now. We'll vote on them each as we go. A move to continue. Joe Sadi, site plan review application to construct a canopy over new fueling tops, demolish existing vacant building, and expand existing parking located at 6 and 10 North Main Street. Can we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Don?
John Druley, aye.
Bob Leary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
Charlotte, aye.
Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Paul Dry, aye.
Pam, can you hear us? I'm not certain, but as Bob said, we don't need every vote.
So in case I didn't clearly hear your motion...
I mean, we're doing all this special voting so Pam can hear, and she's not even voting. I don't understand...
She's not paying attention either.
Why are we doing this?
In case I didn't hear your motion, Madam Chair, did you say continue until November 23rd?
I did not. Move to continue until November 23rd.
And extend the planning board decision deadline to December 31st.
Yes, we have a continuous request from...
Okay. Second, we have a move to continue. Joseph Anna Maria C. Santos, definitive plan application to create a four-lot subdivision located at 187 Central Avenue until November 9th, 2021.
Second.
John?
John Druley, aye.
Bob Leary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
Charlotte Harris, aye.
Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Paul Dry, aye.
Pam?
I think they're still...
She's not having an argument.
Trying to fix the problem that they've got. So that motion is passed, a move to continue. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for coming in.
So that's for 11-9.
11-9, right. We'll see you then. Okay, and third, a move to continue Falmouth Boat Storage LLC, site plan review application to construct a new building and storage area for the construction of boats and boatyard located at 550 East Falmouth Highway until November 9th, 2021.
Second.
John?
John Druley, aye.
Bob Leary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
Charlotte Harris, aye.
Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Paul Dry, aye.
Pam?
How are we recording Pam's votes?
I think it'll have to be recorded as a...
Likely they'll be as abstained, given that they're not required to get us over the...
Is she raising her hand?
I think so.
We don't know why she is raising her hand. I think she's very...
She's waving her hand. Maybe she means that as a yes?
I don't know.
This is dangerous.
We are...
We're interpreting some crazy things here.
We are 6-0-1, and we're fine.
I know, but the... I think the policy's dangerous.
We had a request before to move up the public hearing because Attorney Duffy has come, particularly for the purpose of being part of that public hearing, and we wanted to do it...
The two A&amp;Rs?
You want to do the two A&amp;Rs first?
While Mr. Borselli is visiting with us?
Ah.
If we may.
Okay. We have two A&amp;Rs, let's do those. We've looked at them, and they are simple and relatively straightforward, so let's look at those now. Petition Commissioner Edward Foley Vaughan Esquire and Todd Brain Jr., trustee of OBR Realty Trust, to plan of land to create seven new lots, replacing seven existing lots located at 336 Old Barnstable Road and Adeline's Way. Did you want to speak to that, Todd?
Well, yes ma'am, as I had mentioned in my brief memorandum about motions, this is fairly straightforward. They are two lots that both have the required frontage on Barnstable Road and on Adeline's Way. This is another, you know, progression in the subdivision we've seen here prior to, for the purposes of the A&amp;R, both lots have frontage on ways, both on Old Barnstable and Adeline Way, and they are proper for the board's endorsement if they're so inclined. Mr. Borselli is here if you have any questions.
Mr. Borselli, did you want to say anything further?
Only if there's questions.
I don't believe that there are. We've seen this before. Pat, do you want to read the motion?
Questions.
Just a question.
John?
It says seven lots, but you...
Yeah, that's what I had.
Yeah, that is a typo. The application that came in was three for seven.
Okay.
But I will take the fault on that because I don't do math, although I didn't type that. It was three out of seven.
So the request is for three?
Three lots, yes. The two on the front and the one buildable in the back.
Okay. All set.
I was confused as that as well.
Okay. Do you want to correct the motion?
If there's no... I move to endorse the A&amp;R plan of petition Commissioner Edward Foley Vaughan Esquire and Todd Rainey Jr., trustee of OBR Realty Trust, on Old Barnstable Road and Adeline's Way dated October 18, 2021, without regard to buildability.
Second.
John?
John Druley, aye.
Bob Leary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
Charlotte Harris, aye.
Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Paul Dry, aye.
Pam?
Abstained.
Aye.
It's an aye. Or let's read that as abstained because it's all we can be sure of.
No, she's raising her hand. It's like us, we raise our hand.
Okay, so that's a yes.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know who's recording that. Jeff, I guess. Okay, the motion passes. Now we have a plan for R Investments LLC, plan of land to combine two lots located at 324 and 330 Central Ave. Pat, do we have any discussion on that? Did you want to talk about it, Tom?
This plan combines two vacant lots into one on Central Ave, which we know has frontage and is paved public way. It is perfectly within the board's wheelhouse to endorse this. It's as vanilla as you get for an A&amp;R plan.
Any further discussion? Want to read the motion?
I move to endorse the A&amp;R plan of R Investments LLC on Central Avenue dated July 202021 without regard to buildability.
Second.
John Druley, aye.
Bob Leary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
Charlotte Harris, aye.
Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Paul Dry, aye.
Okay, now we can move on to the...
Pam raised her hand also.
To the public hearing. This is probably our last public hearing on recodification, and Tom and the consultants have arranged a presentation for that. We've got Bob Mitchell, Bob... Yeah, there it is. We're hoping that it's going to work better than it worked before, and Tom gave you the slides that are draft of what might be used at town meeting. So we've sort of got two things going here. One is the public hearing to see what's going to be said and to respond to it, but the second is to take a look at this draft slides and see whether or not you think it's going to be effective for its purpose in a presentation to the town meeting. And I am very glad to see Bob Ament here because he sent us a very thoughtful letter, particularly about new Article 10 on non-conforming structures and lots. So first up, Tom, the consultants?
Yes, ma'am. So I'm going to... The order we had discussed previously in-house was the presentation, Bob Ritchie discussing particularly the non-conforming section, and then questions from the boards to our consultants, and then to the folks in the audience. So the slides before you is a PowerPoint presentation that our consultants, Bob Ritchie and Bob Mitchell, put together for us about a year ago, which we have since annotated. Creates some additional content. So the first question is, you know, what is the zoning bylaw recodification? It's a reorganization. It provides for ease of navigation. It establishes a logical and consistent numbering system. It creates a consistent format throughout the bylaw. It identifies and modernizes outdated language, and it ensures consistency with State Zoning Act and other state statutes, and ensures consistency with recent case laws. So the current zoning bylaw is about 95 years old, and there have been many amendments over the decades. In fact, Mr. Duffy and I were discussing earlier today about some comments with Bob Ritchie from some time back about the frequency of Falmouth zoning bylaws back when Mr. Ritchie was over at the Attorney General's office. So there have been many amendments over several decades that have added to this organized manner. Same topics are scattered all over the bylaw. The bylaw is written in many voices. There's an inconsistent numbering system, formatting, use of language and heading, and location of subject matters and organization of the bylaw. There are wording problems, grammatical vagueness, punctuation, et cetera. There is obsolete and expired sections that have remained in the bylaw, and as stated before, it is not up to date with state statutes and court decisions. Current bylaw outdated, challenging navigate, to administer poorly organized and lacks consistency in a number of ways. As we talked about, the zoning bylaw is 95 years old, and the last time it was updated was 1979. So the goal is to build a new organizational foundation that's far more user-friendly, increases the ease of navigation, and creates a consistent framework, language and style. Provide a bylaw that can be amended in a manner that protect its organizational structure in language into the future. Bylaw improvements proposed create a new user-friendly style for the entire bylaw. It renumbers the bylaw. It groups same topics within same specific bylaw articles. It creates tables and charts and lists to organize the bylaw language. It uses headings and subheadings to assist in navigation, and it disaggregates some very long sentences and paragraphs into separate subsections or tables or lists. Proposed bylaw improvements include the use of simple English as much as possible, the introduction of color and white space to aid in the bylaw navigation. Definitions have been cleaned up and updated, and new definitions are provided. This creation of the use tables to replace long paragraphs and alphabetizing lists, including the use of tables, and replaces the Roman numerals we were cracking the code on earlier tonight. That was 49, as we discovered, X V I X, and replaces those Roman numerals with Arabic numerals. And how we got here? So in 2016, under the former town planner, Brian Curry, he hired Bob Mitchell, FAICP, that's a Fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners, who's one of Massachusetts' leading zoning and land use experts, and Bob Ritchie, who is the former town council for Amherst, Mass. for 15 years, and who was the director of the municipal law unit under the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office for 11 years.
Do you feel you should explain that that's the unit that's going to be reviewing our recodification?
Stole my thunder.
Excuse me?
They are... So when a town adopts a bylaw, the bylaw's affected the date of the vote at town meeting. That bylaw goes to the Attorney General's Office, and the Attorney General makes sure that the process that was put into place and consistency of the bylaw is proper. So that was Bob Ritchie's day job for 11 years as the director of that municipal law unit.
How recently was that?
I'll let Bob answer that. So in August of 2019, the planning board met jointly with the zoning board of appeals with this structure in mind, and laid out the groundwork that included the creation of the new framework and style we've talked about, and the organization of the recodification. But in the contract and right along, there have been several sections of the bylaw that were assigned for some more intensive review. Those included definitions, the creation of use tables, and the non-conforming structures, uses, and lots section. So we had a couple of meetings here with the planning board and our consultants, and at that point, the going was a bit slow, so the suggestion was to create a working group. So town council, who's gracious enough to join us tonight, created a working group. That working group included two planning board members, two zoning board of appeals members, associate town council, the town planner and staff, the building commissioner, and at the time, our new zoning administrator, who's now been here for three years. And it also included our new associate town council, who has since been with us and moved on to the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court. So the working group, after reviewing drafts of various sections of the bylaw, has met about 14 times according to most of the accounts we can come up with. We reached out to the development community and received a number of comments, and put those comments into a 65-page matrix of comments to vet. Those comments were vetted, many of which were included in the current draft, and many more, which were outside of the scope of the recodification, have been included for future phases, including a Phase Two. And there is a Phase Two funding request at this town meeting to continue the work of updating the bylaw after we have a recodification vote. Because as pointed out before, it's much easier to amend and move the bylaw around if pieces are just organized in a structure that allows you to sort of plug things in and plug things out. So there have been many revisions to the section of the bylaw. So this particular slide is from a screenshot from my hard drive, and it notes that the nomenclature that Bob Mitchell uses, 1K, 2Q, 3P, those letters are indicative of the letters of the alphabet and where they show up at. So K is the 11th letter of the alphabet. So in the case of 1K, the purpose section has been... This is the 11th version of the purpose section. In the case of administrative enforcement, 2Q, there have been 17 versions of that. Under 3P, there have been 16 versions of the definition section. Under 5, the use tables, there's been nine versions of that. 6P, the use tables, there's been 16 versions of that. 7K, the overlay district, there's been 11 versions of that. 8H, the special districts, there have been eight versions of that section of the bylaw.
So Tom, your purpose in showing this, because when I emailed you this afternoon, this is the slide I found the most confusing to look at.
Which is why we're...
Right. But your purpose in showing it is to show how often many sections have been gone over. So that is the degree of thoroughness of the vetting of things is what you're trying to get at.
Correct. Particularly for 10U, the non-conforming structures and uses, which is on its 21st rendition.
I think the point's been made.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So that new organizational framework that the board has seen, you know, a couple of years ago, we continue with that framework from the various Roman numerals that we had. We now have Articles 1 through 14, which are the, as stated in the bylaw in the slide. So here's an example of the zoning districts and the uses that were reorganized in a tabular fashion, rather than have the dense amount of text that you had to sort of wade through to figure out what was permissible where. This is an example from the public use district. And here you see in the slide, highlighted in yellow, that one section, 240, 32F, has 107 words in it in a very long statement. So this is an example of that, how we've broken that text into seven bullet points that are easier for folks to follow. Once again, the current zoning bylaw in the general purpose section looks something like this. In revised bylaw, it's broken out into these bullet points into an outline form that's a little easier for folks to follow along with. This is a slide, a little tough to see because of the size. This shows what the current text of the agricultural section looks like, and next to it, the new table that identifies that information. Here's an example of what's allowed. So in the business district, you see by the arrow there at the top on the left, there's a code. In these various zoning districts, this is either N, not allowed, Y, allowed by right, or SPZ requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, or SPP requires a special permit from the planning board. And here you see on the left side who gives permission. So when you read that column down, B1, B2, B3, there's a code next to the use. It says, in this zoning district, you go to the special, either get a special permit from the planning board, or you might, in the case of the second line, it's not allowed at all, or it's allowed by right. So this is the special permit section. So once again, the table allows folks who are new to the bylaw to be able to look at it and find out to what extent you're allowed to do whatever you're in that zoning district, and to whom do you go to receive that permission. Included in the bylaw, included in the work that we've done, is a crosswalk. And this is something where folks says, well, if I want to look at what the old section was, where do I find that new section? So this is the crosswalk that shows where the old section was and where that text is now at. I think this is a very handy thing for folks who really want to get deep into the weeds of the bylaw, but at the same time, I sort of compare it to the metric system where people wanted to know how many quarts in a gallon, or how many liters in a gallon. If we're in the metric system, we're not in the metric system. You can do the legwork to see where things went, but the new bylaw is organized into these new, more readable sections. There's some proposed deletions. There's a deletions table for the bylaw, things that came out. These are examples of some of those things, such as telephone exchange, which is archaic and no longer used. Watersheds, I think we talked about watersheds before, that a watershed isn't actually a use, it's a physical feature. And some general provisions of the bylaw. Building heights and nonconformities, residential use, amnesty. And there are a couple of things in the bylaw that were either moratorium or things like that that have since expired, and they're still in the bylaw. Just because the moratorium expires, it doesn't go away, it has to be removed from the bylaw. So those are a couple of things like that that are proposed for deletion in the bylaw. And some initial ideas for Phase Two. When we first looked at this, the discussion with Mr. Curry and the Bobs, Richie and Bob Mitchell, were looking at the municipal section, looking at the restaurant section. Since we had the benefit of the development community looking at the bylaw and identifying things that they thought were a little confusing and difficult to do, we've added to that Phase Two section. So that new Phase Two section includes things that we'll be considering, including home occupations and home-based services. These two are sort of used interchangeably in somewhat in a confusing manner. The floodplain overlay district, there's a new state-proposed state model for floodplain districts that we've actually been talking about already in-house with conservation. Plan unit development, once again, current bylaw is confusing, vague, and somewhat contradictory, and not well organized. Landscaping standards, parking and off-street loading. I think that we've talked a few times about the number of parking spaces, and how many of us think that perhaps we're overparked in our current bylaw. Earthmoving regulations, and transfer development rights, which is something I think Bob Leary said on the second day I was here, that we need to look at transfer development rights. So these are some of those items that are considered for topics in the future. So to recap, the recodification is the product of four-plus years of work. The hard copy of the document, it's 154 plus or minus pages, is available in the town clerk's office and the planning office. It's also on file at the Falmouth Public Library at the main branch. And if you happen to be going to the Falmouth Public Library tomorrow, tomorrow is Jill Erickson's last day as our chief reference librarian. They're having an open house at 1:00. You could look at the bylaw and say hi and thank you to Jill. It's not in the script, but I thought I'd bring it up. So adoption of the bylaw requires a two-thirds vote, recodification. We talked previously about how the mixed-use residential commercial overlay district as a housing article requires a simple majority vote under the Housing Choice Initiative Act, but for a vote of this type for the general bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote. A link of the entire recodified bylaw updated as the new sections come in is available online. There's a link here, there's a link on our website as well, for folks to go ahead and take a look at that, but for reasons of just economy and ecology, we did not print lots of copies of the 154-page document, but they are widely available for folks to look at. And with that, turn it over to the Bobs.
It's right there. I think you're going to go to your settings here. Thank you for touch screens. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to go into the settings and get them up on the... Give them...
We have to agree with Pam. Pam, sorry, Pam, seconds.
Why do I know what this means?
Well, Pat thinks it is.
This usually means I need to ask a question.
Yes, it does. It's confusing.
I was confused.
It's better to list it as an abstention.
I think thumbs up, thumbs down.
Right.
Be a more simple thing I could understand that. But this usually means I have a question.
Right. When I go get her signature, we talk it over. Nothing better. Well, now we can actually see her. So... Baby steps.
All righty then. Bob, in...
So, favorite steps.
All righty then. Bob, and Bob, are you with us?
I am.
Pam's here.
Yeah.
All righty. So, at this point, with the chair's acquiescence, we'd like to invite Bob Ritchie to talk a bit about the nonconforming use. And at this point, I'll turn it over to you, Bob Ritchie.
Very briefly, with this particular section being singled out as one of the matters that we were asked to do some initial focus on, we were relieved of the necessity of basically taking the old bylaw provisions relating to nonconforming uses and structures, distributed as they were throughout, and start on a whole cloth and say, "How would we create for the reco, a section dealing with this topic in a comprehensive way that was designed pointedly to be consistent with the laws and the Constitution of the Commonwealth? And at the same time, to be fairly clear about what the state law basically mandated of towns when they do zoning? And since zoning is a home rule power of a city or a town, and the home rule power is possessed by the town's legislative body, that is to say, the town meeting, or the city council in the city, by way of bylaws, zoning and general bylaws, cities and towns can exercise the broad range accorded to them under the Constitution to create their own laws. So zoning is basically a municipal function. Zoning is not done by state law. The zoning laws of a town are the creation of the town itself. There are some, a handful of clear guide rails that lay out the overall state framework for zoning, and these must not be breached. And so, when Bob and I sat down to say, "How are we going to let this document, which deals with a very, very complicated subject, and written in a very, very complicated way by the state legislature, how could we take all of this and distill it into a clear presentation of what the zoning for the town of Falmouth is?" So, laying out the language of the statute, either in a direct quotation or in a faithful paraphrase, we start off by saying what the six major preemptive provisions of the zoning act say. And by laying those down, that sort of sets the stage for the town to do whatever it wishes to do in land use regulation under the zoning powers. And they can do anything they want, except to breach one of those six provisions, where the state says, "You must not do that," or "You may not do that," or "If you do something, you must do it this way." So, we tried to cover the topics that were covered in the old bylaw, in a way that was, to Bob's view and my view, a clear and comprehensive way to let a town both have an organically defensible bylaw, and one that takes complicated state statute and lays it out in ways that ordinary human beings can understand. So we tried to do that. In many instances, we simply drew upon language that was, had been in the old bylaw, and to the extent that it did not offend any of the six preemptive provisions that we started off with, we were fine with leaving it there. Sometimes we got rid of it because it was superfluous, sometimes we made changes to it. In all instances, in our effort to be clear, we looked for opportunities to find where the bylaw failed to have adequate standards and criteria that would apply to the interpretation and the enforcement of the bylaw. Unbridled discretion is the biggest way a bylaw can be infected and challenged in court. So while it is true that maximum amount of discretion gives the town the maximum amount of control, the world at large that is subject to this bylaw ought fairly to understand what the bylaw calls upon them to do, and if you want to do something with your land, what it calls upon them to comply with. So, a town can lay out bylaws of its own style, and what we have done here is to create a bylaw that does have standards and criteria for all of the points at which decision-making is called upon, whether it be the grant of a special permit, the making of findings by the board, or issues relating to variances. We tried to say that if there is a decision to be made, what other standards and guidelines and criteria by which the decision maker has to act? So, you have seen, you know, the town has been very fortunate to have, you know, dedicated citizens pointing things out to us in a talented local land use lawyer, suggesting ways in which we might do things differently than the text of the bylaw that we presented to you. We have no vested interests in any particular language that lays out what the town wishes to do with zoning. I think we made a reasonable effort to bring forward into the draft, language that we discern is inoffensive to state law, and does seem to achieve what the town had wanted to do with its zoning. And we were perfectly fine leaving it there. Sometimes we felt the necessity of adding standards and criteria where decision-making was called upon. So, with that sort of as a preamble, while it may be desirable to say, "Well, wouldn't it be easier all the way around if every application for zoning was just thrown at the board and let it make the best decision it can?" Well, it's like hiring a guide to take you through the forest. In a sense, you'd like to have a roadmap before you enter the trail. On the other hand, it's not necessarily the best course of action to say, "Well, let's just strike off and find out what the best trail is as we go." So somewhere in the middle, there was a balance between efficiency and discretion, on the one hand, and being over-prescriptive on the other, where everything is laid out with no decision-making at all. So Bob and I tried, in the language that we presented to you, to give you that balanced view of a bylaw, a zoning bylaw, that we think, that we think in our confidence, measures up to the requirements of state law, and at the same time, achieves what we think the town wishes to achieve for the zoning. But I'd say the large bulk of what's in the bylaw is grist for your mill, and the town should feel free to change it at this point. It should feel free at future town meetings to modify what is written. I think some of the letters that you've received by those that have commented on it are worth reading carefully to see whether or not they have offered you better language, language that you prefer. And Bob and I have tried to take some of that and modify the text of the bylaw that is in its most recent format for you. Now, I don't want to run on too much about this, I start to repeat myself, but that's the sort of the general approach that we took to the task. And since it was one of the primary tasks, and since we were starting off with a clear slate to write on, we tried to state out the minefields that you should not step on, while at the same time, opening the door for the town's own legislative creativity, and that of course falls to the planning board to come up with some of that stuff. And we encourage you to be bullish, to exercise the full power that you have under the home rule amendment, and to create laws that satisfy you and that do what the town wants the bylaw to do. And I guess that's what I would say as a preamble.
Bob Mitchell, did you want to comment on it? I don't know that you could.
There was this, there was a big echo coming through my end. I can't hear it very clearly.
Oh, I was asking if our other Bob, Bob Mitchell, would like to comment on the nonconforming section.
Oh, no, actually, I've covered it very well.
Okay. On the board, any comments, responses? I think that you all got a copy of Bob Amen's letter.
Yes.
Comments or responses?
Yeah.
Bob?
I think the question been raised by Mr. Amen is the comment at the beginning that the, what the philosophy is. And I think it says, "Where possible." Now, that seems to tone that down a little bit. I'm wondering what more could be added to address the issues, and there's some good examples there that Mr. Amen has raised. Is there some way of softening that philosophy, so to speak, so that certain nonconforming uses are in the benefit of the town to continue?
Okay, actually, I would like to say what my reaction to Bob's letter was. I think he makes a really good point. And rather than my trying to repeat incorrectly what he said, I'd like to hear directly from him and see if there are specific recommendations to bring whatever we have into better alignment with what you think we should have. I'd like to preface that by saying that Frank Duffy, as you know, was part of our process all along. So Frank, I invite you to respond also, if you'd like. But Bob, could you please first say what you have found in this one section, nonconforming? Later you can talk to the other sections, but let's just do this one now.
I don't know to whom that was addressed, but to pick up on a point that Bob Amen made, it is true, and I think the town needs to understand that when you read the state statute, when you read your bylaw, understand that if you find there are things that you want to do, but you can't do under this bylaw, as Bob pointed out, we have three Bobs, we have to be careful about who we're trying to be, but Bob Amen mentioned, yes, you can be far more generous than state statute would necessarily require as a minimum. So you can build on that. And if there are things that you think you can't do, that you want to do, that you have always been able to do, but that you don't think you can do under the draft, the way it's drafted, I'd say have at it. You can create language that is more generous than the minimum provisions, preemptive provisions of the state statute.
Well, our effort, just, our effort
Well, just.
is to make no changes. We did not want to be making changes to the bylaw, to chapter 240, in this round. We'll have Phase Two, when we'll be making changes on purpose, and people will know it in advance, and that will be the direction of the work. But this time, it was, we did not want to be in the position of saying, "We've made changes on our own." So, that's what we were trying to do. So with that framework, Bob Amen, you're right, we now have three Bobs.
Well, thank you, Charlotte. I came tonight not really wanting to speak, but because I wrote that letter, and I felt it was only appropriate that I be here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I believe, as I said in the letter, and I gave examples, that the proposed bylaw is much more restrictive than our current section. And I believe that a zoning board of appeals that is inclined to be restrictive will seize on the most restrictive language, and that that's not good for the town. I'd like to think that the Board of Appeals, which is, includes five regular members and additional members, can make good decisions and should have the maximum flexibility that's allowed under the law. Maybe that's an overstatement, but I don't think it should have the minimum flexibility under the law. And I believe that every time there's been a statement in this proposed bylaw, it's leaning in the direction of restriction, as opposed to giving the flexibility that I think is needed to deal with nonconformances. One would think, in reading the proposed bylaw, that nonconformances are bad. You know, nonconformances just are, and they need to be dealt with. And in order to avoid having them become rundown, or even to take advantage of them, they allow things to be done, properties in town that are interesting and useful and helpful to town, to be modernized and changed, and yes, even expanded, because that's where a use has grown up. Wonderful example is what happened to Wood Lumber Company, where the board at the time in 2001 was really very thoughtful in what they allowed to be done. So the problem is, I think that this bylaw is going to make it more difficult to do the right thing, and I don't think that was the intent of the planning board. I don't think that town meeting thinks that the bylaw is being substantively changed, but I believe that this so-important section does that. And as Bob Ritchie says, "We don't have to do that." The state law is a floor of protection. It's the floor, and a town can be more protective. And yes, different statements that are in the proposed bylaw can be found in court cases, but that doesn't mean they have to be Falmouth, and they may be applying the law as it is set forth in other towns. So we have a bylaw, and yeah, it's not perfect, although understanding this language is difficult. We are stuck with state language. But I think that the Board of Appeals does an okay job of determining what is substantially more detrimental and what is not. Sometime, I don't always agree with the Board of Appeals, but I like them having the flexibility, which I think is being taken away from them in the bylaw. And I'd like to emphasize, as I said in a covering note that went with my letter, I haven't addressed everything that I feel is wrong or inconsistent in this bylaw. I mean, my letter was getting long, it takes a long time to put it together, and I'd had enough. But there are other problems with it that I haven't mentioned. The solution is not to address just the things I've said. And those things I've said require a lot of discussion, I think, and trying to think about, what's the goal of the, what do we want the Board of Appeals to do with nonconformances? And boy, we sure don't want them to come into every case with the idea that these should go away. Absolutely not. And that's what this bylaw draft says. So, I mean, I could give you some examples of the things I didn't mention. I think there's some conflicts in this. One thing I want to note is that the present bylaw specifically says that in determining relative detrimentality, that is, is something substantially more detrimental, you know, the Board of Appeals should consider, consider whether the proposal creates a new nonconformity. It doesn't prohibit a new nonconformity, although the Board of Appeals has sometimes thought so. And there's no question that it was case law that says that. But the town can allow, should give the Board of Appeals flexibility, in my opinion. And I think these things should be talked through. And I think that a committee that works on these things, that only consists of members of the town boards and town officials, is a mistake. And I believe, I think that was true also in dealing with the bylaw on accessory apartments. Others interested in this, that subject, and knowledgeable, were not allowed to sit at the table and participate. And I think we can do better. Thanks.
Thank you for taking the time to give us as much help as you have, Bob. It really has been a great help. And as you know, we've taken a number of your comments seriously and made changes as a result. Frank, I wonder what your reaction is to what Bob has just said.
I can make one thing that you're reminding me of, one more thing. Yes, I did suggest a bunch of other changes that were really... Yes, I did suggest a bunch of other changes that were really clear errors and corrections. It's a hundred and fifty-four page document or something like that. There are a bunch of errors. I haven't caught them all. I did not catch them all. I guarantee you of that. We're going to find things going forward that need to be corrected. And I hope that, going forward, and I hope that this reorganization gets approved.
Oh, could you say that again?
I hope it gets approved, but not with Article 10 as it is now. But I do not think it would be hard to just take out the four new pages and leave what was there. I think it could be done. I started to do it, but again, I'd worked a lot on it, um, already. I think it could be done in the next couple of weeks, pretty easily, so that nobody should have any argument, because it's what the bylaw says now. But I really want to emphasize that whether it's at the spring of 2022 meeting, or next fall's meeting, I hope that, uh, planning board will be open to dealing with, with errors and, and treat them just as if they were brought to your attention now, because, there will be some like that.
Well, as you have often said to us, when you've made presentations on particular cases and applications, we shouldn't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I hope that doesn't happen this time, because we are very much hoping that it passes in this town meeting. And as you know, we're asking for funding for phase two, which is the very beginning of making any corrections that we make this time. So there's a process for that that we're already setting in motion. But we're hoping that this will be the town meeting. Frank, would you comment on what Bob has said?
Yes, Frank Duffy, Town Counsel. I'd like to start out by, um, saying I certainly appreciate, this is personal to Bob, for the comments that you have given us throughout the entire process and in these letters. We've also received very useful comments from other attorneys. Laura Moynihan comes to mind, Ed Kirk comes to mind, and a few other people who have also contributed to this effort. When we started this process, uh, I guess it was in 2018, um, it was our goal to come to this point, uh, at this town meeting, with a recodified bylaw, which was basically a recodification and not, and not a wholesale amendment to the bylaw. It is my goal, and I think it's the goal of everybody here, that at the November town meeting in three weeks, that the article passes and the bylaw be recodified. And I view that as the beginning, really, of the whole process. We're trying to set up a framework where we can then address all of the issues that Mr. Amen has raised, that other people have raised, that you've raised, that the Bobs and the Bobs up here have raised, and so on and so forth. Uh, there's work that's going to be going on for the next three or four years, probably. And, um, hopefully, there'll be a lot of openness to the process. We'll be having meetings, discussions with the planning board. I take Mr. Amen's comments about the process, uh, seriously. We set up the process as it was with the mem, with, basically with staff, because that's how we envisioned, not trying to exclude anybody, but the, the way the work was going to be done, the time of day it was going to be done. Much of the work was done, uh, remotely, much of the work was done by various people at various locations. It really didn't lend itself necessarily to the traditional committee function. But I think maybe going forward, it might. I'm not sure that I totally agree with Mr. Amen's comments about the sections, about the pre-existing nonconforming uses. I think while it is clear that there's mention in here that they're discouraged and the purpose of zoning is to bring parcels and uses into compliance, there's adequate language in here that says, and makes it very clear, that the Zoning Enabling Act and the zoning bylaw treats pre-existing nonconforming uses as special parcels, parcels and special uses. And that they, uh, they have protections. And these protections are not, um, thrown overboard. They are incorp, they're still remain in the bylaw. And I know that, um, perhaps there have been some, uh, I don't think the, the bylaw has become more restrictive. In my mind, what we have done is, I think, what, uh, Bob Ritchie said earlier, it's an attempt to, uh, uh, bring some clarity to the bylaw. We know that the section about nonconform, uh, pre-existing nonconforming uses and structures is probably the most complicated section of the whole bylaw. And it's the most complicated section of zoning generally. Uh, one of the purposes of recodification is to bring some clarity to the bylaw. And even if it means that the zoning board of appeals is going to have to be a little bit more focused in their deliberations, well, I think that, so be it. But, uh, I think what I would ask the planning board to consider is let, let us do what we can to get this process underway and get it moving. Uh, and, and that would include, um, passing the, uh, recodification bylaw, so that we now have a framework going forward. Tom Bott, in his, uh, presentation earlier, gave you some of the considerations that we're going to be undertaking for phase two. I'm sure Mr. Amen and others will have additional items that, that should be added to phase two. Phase two is the heavy lift. What we are really doing now is just kind of setting the platform upon which the heavy lift of the, uh, the bylaw, of, of bringing the bylaw into the 21st century, or 22nd century, or whatever century we're in, uh, is, is necessary.
So you don't see the Article 10, the article we're talking about, as changing the, what we have now?
Well, it, it's, it's, um, I, I certainly take Mr. Amen's, um, comments seriously. And yeah, there are some changes now, I think, to be honest. That is, in the process of recodifying the bylaw, there were some changes made. We, we made every effort we possibly could to keep them to an absolute minimum, but in some situations, um, it was so obvious that there might be some changes made. I'm not really prepared to talk to you about specifics right now, but, um, the whole product that you have before you is basically the same bylaw recodified. There are a few changes in there. And if it, if we can, if it means, uh, to get this passed, we have to eliminate them, well, that maybe is what we should do.
Could you limit what you're saying to just Article 10, to the nonconforming structures? Because that's, that's the one that's in greatest question. I don't think there were definitely changes that needed cleanup, that needed to be done to the other articles, and Bob contributed to that, and others did, and we did the best that we could with it. But I think, right now, the one that we're most stuck on is the nonconforming. And it, it may sound as if, gee, nonconforming, that can apply to very many things, but in fact, it applies to most of what's in town.
Well, it applies to quite a bit. It, it does apply to quite a bit. There's absolutely no question about that.
Right, because people have been, nonconforming is anything that was already built under existing laws or rules or whatever existed before January 1st, 1981. That's a lot of buildings in town. So it covers a lot. So it is very important, what kind of flexibility people have with those properties. And in your mind, is what we, we are now proposing for Article 10, does it take away any of those flexibilities? You're saying-
I, I, um, I, I, as I said, I read Mr. Amen's comments, um, and I see that, that he finds that certain provisions in the recodified bylaw limit the discretion of the Board of Appeals in a way that affects him or his clients adversely. I don't necessarily see it that way. I see that the recodified Section 10, now, Section 10, is cognizant of the fact that pre-existing nonconforming in uses and structures have a special status in zoning, and that they may be altered, um, and, um, in, uh, what was the language? Extended and altered, uh, by special permit of the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Amen makes some, uh, some points that the word changed, um, has been deleted. I still think that there is discretion on the Board of Appeals to treat nonconforming uses and structures correctly.
Would it help to put back the deleted word?
Well, we could.
Well, why don't we do it?
Just, uh, just a word on process. Throughout this, uh, recodification of the working group, uh, we've had two members of the zoning board of appeals attending. We've had a couple, a little turnover, and we've had one member consistently there throughout. We've had a couple members step in and step out, Mary Berry and Jerry Thomas serving on that. And the zoning administrator, uh, who had 14 years' experience before she got here, three years here, so she's, uh, Noreen Stockman has been deeply engaged in this as the administrator and working on it every day. So she's been, her fingerprints on it. Because, uh, you can't have three members of a committee, three members of the ZBA on the, on the working group, because that constitutes a quorum, uh, throughout this process, whomever the chair of the committee was, also got copies of all the things that we've been doing. So throughout this process, every draft, every section has gone to the members of the working group and the chairs of both of the boards. So TJ Hurry has seen these, Noreen, Jerry, uh, Mary Berry when she was there, and, uh, Rob Dugan. So we have, they have been engaged along the process. And I don't recall any pushback from them at any point going, this is, you know, this, you know, uh, this isn't working for us. So I just want to make sure people know that it's not happening in a vacuum. Uh, and, you know, we've had, uh, a, a lot of reviews of a lot of language with those people who are going to be administering the bylaw at the table. Uh, and, um, that's just how the process has gone.
It's good to be reminded of that. I'm, I'm thinking now of the proposal that Bob made at our last meeting, that why couldn't we have like a year's grace period, when we have both zoning, uh, laws, uh, in effect? And when you think about it, A, it's unworkable, but B, you don't really need to, because you will have both. You'll have the one that's passed and is official, and you'll have the memory of the other one. And anyone who brings something and feels that it's been changed, there's a process for discussing that. Two processes, really, because they would be going out to us. We don't hear of those kinds of appeals. It would be going to the ZBA, they could discuss it, and they have the flexibility to consider that. They could still do that. And then there's the change process we're discussing of phase two, where we can change the language.
Well, at this point, I'd ask, uh, the board, uh, we have another meeting prior to town meeting. Do we want to, uh, make a motion tonight to move the bylaw as it is? Or do we want to extend, uh, this discussion, uh, to, uh, the eighth, uh, to have some additional discussion about it? Considering the fact that we have so many things on for the eighth, it might mean, uh, scheduling a, uh, an additional meeting, uh, for the first of November, uh, in order to get those things done, if that's workable from the folks who are looking at, uh, potentially modifying the bylaw.
I'm sure. Are we talking just about Article, uh, Article 10?
I believe we are.
Nonconforming uses, the, the other articles of the recodified zoning bylaw are non-controversial?
I think that we were talking about Article 10. I don't think we're talking about the whole 14 articles now. Isn't that true? Right, so-
I'm not sure.
What's your thought?
I'm not sure. I think there may, there may be other things that are, other than Article 10. Uh, there seems to be an interpretation by our staff when it comes in, if it's not worded perfectly and it isn't there in the bylaw, that it's not allowed. And we have historically had many things that have been built in our town. And now, the, the absence of having the perfect world just means it not, it, their, their interpretation that it's being excluded. And I, I have some serious reservations about that, and I'd like to talk about it at another meeting. I'd like to put it on the agenda to discuss it.
So you would like another?
I'd like, absolutely, to have another meeting.
I'm fine with that.
Me too.
I don't have a problem with another meeting, but having been through the whole process, I think I missed one meeting through this whole process, when I was visiting my kids in California. I can attest to the carefulness with which we scrutinized all of this and made changes, because, uh-oh, it could change something, and we didn't want to do that. We corrected some language that made it ambiguous, so that we weren't getting what we got. I can tell you that it was so carefully done, I am not really sure what one more meeting is going to change and correct to take it to town meeting.
Paul?
My concern is, we've been working on this for four years. As Town Council said, we need to get this passed to move on to the second phase of it. My concern is that we begin town precinct meetings next week.
Right.
And it would be much better for this board to say, yes, we're in favor of this, and go into a precinct meeting and support it, because it's going to be hard to get two-thirds vote in town meeting without the full support of the precincts. So I'd be hesitant to have another meeting and put off the decision on this, because we need to tell the precincts that this is what the planning board recommends.
Paul has reminded us of something important. Does it change what you're thinking? John?
Well, I think, I think it's very important. It's a, it's a good point. However, when this process started, the whole point was to make, uh, make it easier to read this, by, the bylaws and to understand them, and not make any changes of substance. And here we have Article 10, which does have, um, substantial change to the language.
I don't think anybody said substantial. I think we have to be careful. Paul?
Well, I think that's what I've heard.
Did you? Oh.
No, I think it makes substantial changes. The removal of the word change is a very significant, uh, modification. And just putting that word back in one place doesn't, uh, begin to address the problems which, you know, I sent you three pages about. If you would like, I'll discuss the section that tries to ascribe meanings to the important words, nonconforming nature and substantially more detrimental. And I'll show you how they are so convoluted. If you want, I'll, I'll tell you why. And it's, we- The only way I would support bylaw being, uh, recodified at this town meeting, and I do want that, is to strip down lot, uh, Article 10, and just, and not add, you know, triple the length of it. Go from two-plus pages to six-plus pages. There's so much wording in here that is problematic and contradictory with other sections, other parts of the very article. I think that recodification is a good thing. I don't like what's been done to Article 10. If you want me to speak for another couple minutes about a particular important part of it, I will.
I, I actually would like it. This is the only time we are all allowed to think together. Otherwise, we can't meet more than three at a time, so it just slows everything down. So if you don't mind taking the time tonight?
I'm going to make a point here, though, because I think between this meeting and the next meeting, unless Bob redoes it exactly as he sees, I don't see how it's going to get done.
Oh, I can see a very clear path to getting it redone.
You can?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't, we put in any language that's already there about nonconforming structures, lots and buildings, and don't do anything else to it. Then we know there's no change. So, so there's the like, go back to zero. And then there's, take what we've been given by our consultants, who are experts in this field outside of Falmouth. So there's, there's two clear routes.
Okay.
And if we can't make a few changes in between, we're in trouble.
If it's just a few changes, fine.
So I just wanted to reemphasize, uh, that the recodification and the discussions we have been having, including, beginning with August 2018, uh, when the working group was created and those discussions with the ZBA, was to, uh, lay out a groundwork that includes the creation of a new framework, style and organization for the recodification, including several specific sections of the current bylaw that were assigned for more intensive review. This is from the initial contract, and this is what we've been doing for four years. Those sections, those specific sections of the current bylaw that were assigned for more intensive review, included definitions, creations of use tables, and nonconforming structures and uses. So this has been on the table. This has been discussed since day one. And as we saw, uh, this particular section, through revisions with the working group and working with Noreen, has had, what, 21 different versions of it? So this has been in the making throughout the entire process. This is not new news. This is not something late-breaking. This is something that has been cooked into the recipe for the recodification from day one, from the original contract in 2016, uh, that Mr. Curry, uh, Brian, uh, Brian Curry, uh, Mr. Bob Mitchell and Bob Ritchie were all signatures of. It's not late-breaking news.
I don't think anyone's arguing that it's late-breaking news. They're saying that the work on it may not be complete. There may have been a lot of it, but it might not be complete. They're not saying it's late-breaking. They're not saying it's late-breaking. So, and it's, I think the disadvantage of the planning board is in, is that this is not, in a way, our article. We don't administer this article. The Zoning Board of Appeals administers this article. So most of the work that was done on it, the twenty-one times the chart said this had been revised. Pat Nice sat on that, and I think, I never kept track of my attendance, but I don't think I missed more than one. I was there.
The only reason I know that is because Tom asked me to double-check how many meetings. So I went through my handwritten calendar today.
Oh, well, I, I didn't.
So I know.
But I was there. And we did not have extensive discussions about this particular one, because it really only applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals, not to the whole board. And it could be that all those other people did, but we weren't party to it. So when I hear that there's a possibility that inadvertently more change was made than the committee expected, I think we ought to attend to it. And I would, I just am very uncomfortable with the idea that our board is going to go to town meeting and say, yep, we did what we said we were going to do, this is no change. Oh, except for this one. That's just really awkward.
Let's hear Mr. Ahmet speak.
Yeah. I'd, let's see what we can do to, to see if there's something that we can make it acceptable now, and we can go forward so that we can get it to town meeting complete on the thirteenth of November. So Bob, did you want to go ahead with your examples? I wish we'd brought our copy.
Well, let's just talk about the section of the bylaw that is supposed to be helpful to the Board of Appeals in understanding what nonconforming nature means and substantially more detrimental means. First of all, the language that's in the state statute and in our local bylaw is not substantially more detrimental. The increase in nonconforming nature is not in either of those, either the statute or our local bylaw. That really comes from case law. And I had mentioned in my letter, the powers tests, which is part of an important case on the subject. So how is this helpful to the Board of Appeals in undering what, understanding what it means to not increase the nonconforming nature of a structure? It says that the determination should be governed by the express provisions of the bylaw that specify its meaning and application to particular structures or uses. Period. That's it. What does that mean? It's a bunch of words. Do you really, does that really tell you what it means? Or does it simply mean the Board of Appeals has to look at the existing bylaw and see whether the proposed change complies with the bylaw? That's not what the Board of Appeals should be doing in weighing whether changes should be allowed to a nonconforming use. And I'd point out that there's been a recent case, 2019 case, Belada versus, I think it was Brain Tree, that specifically said that a Board of Appeals can allow an, an extension of a nonconformance, that can allow it to become a bigger nonconforming structure in that case. And you wonder whether, with the kind of language we have, that would even be possible. But let's go to what's really more important, not substantially more detrimental. And as I pointed out in my letter, the three tests that are given here are the tests from that powers case, which has to do with whether a special permit is needed. And what this bylaw is doing and saying, these are the tests that must be all addressed and met before you can grant a special permit to change, to alter or extend a nonconformance. It says that the special permit granting authority must make all of the following findings, one that the nonconforming structure used reflects the nature and purpose of the structure when the bylaw took effect. Doesn't that say you can't change it? They have to find that the nonconforming structure or use is not different in quality, character, or degree from the prevailing use when the bylaw took effect. Doesn't that mean that you couldn't have taken, couldn't, could not have allowed the casino in the Heights with a 2,000 occupancy nightclub to be changed, as it was, by special permit, to an upscale restaurant and, and eight apartments, eight condominiums? Because that was obviously different in character than the original use. And the third is the nonconforming structure use is not different in kind and its effect in the neighborhood. Well, I'd sure prefer what happened over in the Heights than, to this. But that's just one, one example. I gave you a couple more examples of nonconforming structures and uses in town, and they may have to be changed. Because the property can go to ruin, or you don't want it to go to ruin. You want it to be used for some good use. And it might be a different use. I don't think it's so hard for the Zoning Board of Appeals to make a decision as to whether something is or is not substantially more detrimental than the existing condition. We do have some language in the bylaw that helps, and it's enough. But this language isn't helping. And then the old language is repeated farther into the bylaw, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Reactions?
I think if we can find a way to keep it the way it is right now, without a big deal, we should do it. I was on the zoning board for ten years. I know, I know it's a critical issue. And, and every board that we have in this town is basically a volunteer board. We're all just citizens. And so the character of the board changes maybe every year, or every two years, every five years. People come, people go, but these, these don't change. But their interpretation can change. The way one person hears it is, can be different than another person. That's why we have multiple votes. So I'm not an attorney, and it is complicated, but it's worked for us for a long time, and I just would hate to mess that up by, by using a recodification to change it. And, and, and what we hear is, well, we could just go back to town meeting the next time and make an adjustment on it. But it's taken us four years to get here for this. The next time it could be changed might be three years from now. And what damage is done in the meantime? If we can simply make the adjustment to keep it the way it is in time for town meeting, that's what I would prefer to do.
Other reactions? I would agree with John. If it can be done in time to take it to town meeting, because this appears to be a great stumbling block. And recodification, as has been stated many times, is the framework for going forward. And we don't want to create a stumbling block with this, and we can't go forward. So if it can be done in time to just bring it back to what it was, then we will have the time in Phase Two to look at it more carefully and see if certain other things should be perhaps more gently changed or however, get a lot more discussion in this.
And get the full subcommittee to focus on it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, which didn't happen. Barbara, Jim?
I, I, I agree with John.
Paul?
I don't think we need another meeting. I think we need to get it moving. Because we have town, you know, I'd hate to go to town, to a precinct meeting and tell people we need two-thirds vote. But the planning board hasn't decided whether they support this or not. That would be a terrible message. And if we go next week and say, you know, the planning board hasn't decided whether to support this or not at the moment, we'll wait till town meeting, it's not going to pass. And the consequences of not passing this at this time, I think, are pretty, pretty significant.
But that's why, if it can be done, if you can present it, that we are just bringing forward the exact wording of the prior one.
Well, what we will have accomplished is we've now accumulated it together in a separate chapter where it can be examined and looked at.
Right.
So there's more or less of a step forward. It's within the framework now. You can find everything that there is to say about nonconforming structures. But it doesn't add to it. It doesn't change it.
Mm-hmm.
Are we in agreement on that?
I have a question.
I was hoping to have another meeting. I had things I wanted to discuss. It doesn't seem like there's an appetite to do that, so whatever.
Um, I would...
Is that something different than recodification, Jim?
Yes. It is, it, it is similar, because it seems to be now everything is black and white, and there's no gray area and no room for judgment and for past practices in the, this...
But couldn't we discuss that at a different time? I mean...
I would like to. It has to be on the agenda. It's, you know, it's something, it's...
Could I, could I comment on that? I'm sort of in agreement with you, but I think what it has to do is with the board asserting itself. It's not with changing the language. It's that when things come to us and we've been, we've heard somehow, oh, no, we can't. Well, yes, often we can. It's, it's, that's why there are citizens elected to serve on this board, is to make a judgment, to use our discretion, as much as is allowed to us, to make those changes. That's really up to the board. Changing the language isn't going to change the application of it. I don't know if that sounded like agreement, but it is actually. And Paul's point, that we really, we need to go, I brought the list of the precinct meetings so we can figure out who's going to which meeting in order to support this. This is four years' work. Frank is retiring. We're going to lose our institutional memory.
He can't retire until this is all done.
Oh, don't we wish?
I thought that was part of the, the deal from the beginning.
No, this isn't the Frank Full Retirement Forever program. This is the, we got to do it now.
If we can do this at one more meeting, make, make this one adjustment?
I think we can say we want the adjustment made.
Yes. We'll make the adjustment.
We need a motion.
I have a question. Why couldn't this issue be taken up in Phase Two?
It will be. It absolutely will be.
What's the point? Pass this and deal with it in Phase Two?
Exactly. It automatically becomes part of Phase Two.
No, John, Paul is saying, pay, pass it as it is now. John is saying, no, because it may take another three years and what damage can be done in between before we can...
No, I think Paul, Paul was, what I understood you to mean is that we would keep Article 10, nonconforming structures and lots, as it is in the current bylaw. We wouldn't use the proposed language, would use the current language for Article 10, and we would approve it tonight. And Frank, you wanted to say something?
I would sort of like to pose the question to our consultants on this, because they're the, the folks that drafted this recodified bylaw. But if we were to go ahead, can, can we even present an article in which the vast majority of the zoning bylaw is recodified, apparently to the approval of most people, with the exception of this Article 10 on nonconforming uses, given the way that this has been put together? Is it even possible to expect that could be done? Do they hear us?
Bob Ritchie and Bob Mitchell, did you hear the question?
I think I heard the question. And I was picturing in my mind's eye, like, taking the parts from a Corolla and installing them in a, in a Tesla. You know, if we, if we tried to import stuff from the old bylaw into the framework of the new bylaw, we'd have to cherry pick from like twenty-one or twenty-two separate locations and then figure out where do they fit in organically. I'm not sure, and forgive me for not picking up every word that it's, is very difficult to hear on this end. I, I may have misconstrued the question, but...
This is about the other Bob, or the other, other Bob, depending on how we're counting. I wasn't clear on the question either. Is it the idea to either take the existing draft of Article 10 and try to massage that based on Mr. Ahmet's concerns, or is it to take Article 10 out entirely and just replace it with the existing language in the bylaw?
B, it's to take the, the proposed bylaw out and replace it with the existing bylaw, the current bylaw.
So the new Article 10 would just be the existing language from the existing bylaw?
Yes. Bob Ahmet?
Okay. That can be done. That's not a problem.
That can be done. Okay, thank you.
That can be done.
I don't think you can just take out Article 10 and put in Section 243 of the current bylaw, in part because Article 10 as written is not only nonconforming structures and uses, but also nonconforming lots. And so the sections that are in the present bylaw, 240-66, regarding nonconforming lots, have become part of Article 10. And that section, I have in common about that, looks fine. It's just a repetition of everything that's already in the bylaw. I don't think it would be hard at all to just take out new language in Article 10 and put in the right order, perhaps doing what was done with other sections. Same language, maybe in a little bit different order, but not introducing new ideas, new definitions. I don't think it would be hard to do that at all and have something that was more like the two and a half pages that 240-3 is. But simply lifting 240-3, substituting for, for 10, that's, that's not the way to do it. But I think it can be done in a very short amount of time, so that you could all have a draft very quickly. And much as I don't want to, I'd be happy to help with that.
I don't know. Bob Mitchell and Bob Ritchie, did you hear that?
I, I only could hear a part of it. So I, I, there was some concern about taking, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, and there might be some concern about taking the various language that's in different places in the existing bylaw and putting it, that relate to nonconformities, and putting them into a new Article 10?
Is the microphone at the table better for them to hear?
The microphone at the table has been set up to pick up their voices.
Trying to paraphrase what, what Bob said, but Bob Ahmet said he had no comments particularly or concerns about the provisions in Article 10 as they're related to, to nonconforming lots, correct? Okay. His concern is the reference to the provisions in 240-3 and related sections of the zoning bylaw that relate to pre-existing nonconforming uses and structures. And if that provision of the existing bylaw were to be included unchanged in Article 10 of the recodified zoning bylaw, that would satisfy his concern, correct?
I think the existing language is almost, if not entirely, already there. It's just there's so much other language that is a problem and is even contradictory. Just go through it, take out all the new language, see what's there that's in the old bylaw. It won't take very long.
Mr. Ahmet's volunteering to do that.
But we've, we've run out of money, so I don't think we're going to get Mr. Ahmet to do it.
Use the word volunteer.
But I guess...
Bob, Bob Ahmet, do you wish to draft that up and give it to us, so we can get the result we want?
As soon as we need it.
Well, the precinct meetings are next week.
So yesterday, Bob.
It'd be this week.
So to thread a needle, we could have a meeting on November 1st, or November 7th.
That's next week.
Correct. And that meeting would take place before the first precinct meeting, which is the third. So if the board was willing to meet on November 2nd, which is a Tuesday, the precinct meetings are the third. That is threading the needle.
I think that meets everybody's needs.
Certainly meets mine, because I have some issues I'd like to address.
Let's just do it.
All right, we'll do that. So we're going to continue this until next Tuesday, when we'll have some volunteer work on this, and some more work, and have a document to work from next Tuesday night.
Very well.
Ready, ready to present to town meeting?
Yes.
Hopefully. Hopefully, ready to present it. We hope it's going to be... We hope it's going to be adopted, we're going to approve it on November second. So we're going to continue this hearing, we have a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Bob Leary, aye.
Bob Leary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
Charlotte Harris, aye.
Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Pam, we're not too short to.
Can she be instructed to thumbs up, thumbs down?
Pam, are you thumbs up on this? Like that, yes.
Yeah.
Good, excellent, so it's six to one. Good. And that settles that. Exactly. Thank you all, that took patience, thank you. And thank you, Bob.
All righty, and.
Be good to go to town meeting and say we didn't make changes.
And thank you, Mr. Duffy.
And thank you very much, Mr. Duffy, for giving us your nighttime.
All righty, Bob and Bob will chat in the morning.
Yes, and Bob and Bob, oops, but it'll work.
Talk to you guys in the morning.
Okay, we have one more meaty kind of thing that we want to deal with tonight. It's the Davis Straits Working Group update, they have. We didn't do that?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait.
Where's Pam?
We closed off Pam?
Why'd you cut her off?
You know, Tom, I've made a big mistake. We did not approve the crosses and they made such a good application for an accessory apartment.
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve? Tom, did you prepare a motion?
We do, we have it, yeah.
Should we read it and do it?
Yeah.
Bob?
Bob?
October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Francis and Donald Cross for the construction of a one-bedroom detached accessory dwelling unit located at 428 Blacksmith Shop Road under Article Thirty-nine, site plan review of the zoning bylaw for a planned entire site plan of land scale one inch equals thirty feet, along with exterior elevations and floor plans entitled accessory building for Don and Fran Cross, 428 Blacksmith Shop Road, found with mass, prepared by Bruce A. Peterson, architectural design, dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, scale one quarter inch equals one foot, along with photos of the residence with the following findings. The applicant, Francis and Donald Cross, seeks to construct a one-bedroom detached accessory dwelling unit located at 428 Blacksmith Shop Road. The parcel containing eighty thousand seventy-five square feet is owned agricultural AA, A-G-A-A, and is located in the Wildlife Carrot Overlay District. The proposed detached accessory dwelling unit is eight hundred square feet. The primary residence is approximately two thousand one hundred and fifty-one square feet and currently contains four bedrooms. Therefore, with the new accessory dwelling unit, the overall bedroom count for the property will be five bedrooms. The proposed percentage of total floor area of the accessory dwelling unit is thirty-seven and two tenths percent of the total finished floor area of the principal structure. Lastly, the detached accessory dwelling unit appears to be located in the front yard as defined in Section 240-13 and therefore will need to seek approval by special permit from the zoning board of appeals per Section 240-68A-8. The applicant's attempt, attention is directed to the zoning board of appeals referral date dated September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, which indicates that the applicant should apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. The planning board's review does not include building code review and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code. The planning board considered the above referenced referrals and the applicant's response in this matter. The board will condition its decision accordingly. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240-381 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. pursuant to Section 241-83B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year or owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commissioner, signed by the property owner, attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both during the five months the owner occupant may be absent. Rental period shall be no less than six months and weekly, monthly rentals, summer rentals so-called are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor the accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Four, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights away. Five, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence for Section ninety-nine dash one, affixing of legible numbers required, time limit for compliance. If the number is not visible from the roadway, the number should be added out at the end of the driveway in addition to the building face. Six, it is the applicant's responsibility to notify the post office and utilities of the address.
Second.
All in favor?
I was on here, I abstained.
Bob Leary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
Charlotte Harris, aye.
Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Paul Dry, aye.
Motion is passed, thank you very much. Now we can move on, planning board discussion. Jim and Pat, you were, you're on the Davis Straits Working Group. You've had two meetings and you're going to give an update to the rest of the board. It is posted, we can see one of the meetings by a link that's on the planning board website. So I've watched one of them.
Well, there was some notes prepared, but I can just speak to just the major issues that I recall that it really came through the walking through of the neighborhood and understanding. And it could be a real conflict because John's note was that the state doesn't want to have on-street parking on Route twenty-eight. And to have a neighborhood with retail locations and stores, it's very important that you have on-street parking, that the traffic slowed down, that it's safe for people to walk. And so we have a major conflict between what the state wants to do on Route twenty-eight. And I don't think we are going to change Davis Straits into being a neighborhood street if it's a superhighway where people are stepping on the gas, trying to fifty miles an hour and blow through town. I think it needs to be calmed down, slowed down, more like Main Street. And that's going to be a hurdle for us to get through. I mean, but in talking, in the walkthrough with Tom and what's Mr. Green's.
Tony Green.
Tony Green, you know, he made it clear, and I totally agree with him, that if you take a look at the value of retail space, it's when people can stop, get out of their car, go into the store, and not have to walk across two hundred yards of concrete and pavement where they're going to get run over or have to drive. I mean, it's a real conflict. When we zoned Davis Straits, we, we did it for cars. And I want to change it for people. And that's a serious problem. I don't think it's going to work unless we make that change.
Well, and now would be the time to work with the state. Because after hearing this, and I heard it from, from Tom and from watching the meeting and looked up the state rules and then remembered that I drive Route Six to Connecticut frequently in order to visit a member of my family who lives in Connecticut. That's a state highway, it passes through a number of towns. In the towns, it's just a little town road and people are parking on it. People are parking on it, and those are state roads. So I know there are instances of the state allowing it.
Right, but that's, that seems to be the biggest challenge that I've come up with so far. I mean, we have challenges of, of types of building, building heights. But if we don't get that, we're not going to get what we want, it won't work.
John?
Well, when I attended that meeting a couple of weeks ago, they had brochures of what they're proposing. And I can leave that at the planning board office tomorrow.
Oh, great, thanks.
It just shows bicycle lanes on each side and, you know.
The regular state road.
Sidewalk, that type of thing. And it was just the first hearing, they're, it's not, they're not saying this is what we're going to do. It was the first showing to the citizens of town.
I'd just like to plant a picture in everybody's head. Just go to the, in your mind, the density done right. And they talked about a street, and it looked like Route Nine in Framingham, and it was a highway going back and forth, okay? And then transformed, it had people's sidewalks, people sitting there, trees and walking. And there was, there was people, there was the same street and some of the same buildings. It was totally different feel. And that's really the meat of this discussion is that that through traffic and through flow is what maybe the state wants to do. But if you want to create a neighborhood, you don't want a state highway flowing through the middle of your neighborhood.
Has any effort been made to talk with our own DPW who is out, you know, presenting plans and the state to whether or not they're actually open to it?
Not at this point, Charlotte, because it was just being talked about. No, it was just being talked about.
Yeah, but now DPW is really doing, you know, they're in their final design phase, aren't they, Jed?
No, if I may, they're, at this point, they're still in conceptual.
Right, they're not even at eighty percent, right?
Not even at ten percent yet.
Okay, yeah.
So they're very early, to John's point, they're very early in the process. And this is the time where you want to have that conversation. And, and we did, you know, informally just inform the DPW that, you know, it was a topic of conversation with the, with the working group and that, you know, it may be coming forward at some time in the future. But I think that to, even to Jim's point, when you start talking about a type of environment that's going to be supportive of retail and economic development, but also supportive of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, on-street parking is one of the ways, one of the tools in the toolbox. And, you know, I outlined that in the, in the memo that I provided. But again, it's preliminary, so we're in the very beginning part of this process of trying to figure out, is it possible? And in conversations with DOT at District Five, it sounds like it is. They do allow on-street parking on state highway, but only through a permit process. So you basically have to ask for it. And it doesn't mean that, you know, they say yes every time, but that's the process. You have to simply ask for permission to do so.
Two questions, Jed, how, how do we insert our project into that thinking process now?
Right, so it's, it's a coordinated effort, you know, the planning department has to work closely with the DPW and try to figure out if, if, you know, they'd be open to the idea and whether or not, you know, conceptual plans could be, you know, modified to include alternatives.
Well, it looked as if the stretch of road that you're looking at goes from Stop and Shop Corner up to past Gus Canty, is that right?
What they were showing was from Fowl of Heights Road, the sandwich road.
That's what DPW is showing for fixing the road.
That's right.
But the part Davis Straits Working Group is looking at is a little longer than that, I think.
It's almost like from Scranton to Jones Road.
Right. And we don't have on-street parking for part of that.
No, in fact, it ends on-street park, and in fact, invite all of you to drive down Main Street and you go a little bit beyond Shore Street and the on-street park disappears and bang, the gas pedal goes and look out, get out of the way, the cars are in charge.
That's true.
Well, you'd like to do that, but there's too many cars to go fast.
Well, but it is that way, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I think it might be Gifford Street where the fall off. I know there's some parking right after Shore Street, there's in front of the pizza place and the places. But I think around Gifford Street, on-street parking goes away. And.
I think it's before that loop job place.
There is some.
So that is Gifford Street.
There's a couple spaces in front of the Chinese restaurant.
Right. But then it falls off. And then the accelerator goes down and the speed limit changes and it's not meant for walking or people. It's designed for cars.
So where does the state authority pick up? Where does local authority end and the state authority picks up?
I can't tell you specifically that, but the, the point of having this discussion and, and bringing the conversation that the working group has had about this to the attention of both the DPW and the planning board. So everyone's aware of options that are being discussed. But Jed points out, it's early days and I know there's been a lot of conversations, a lot of meetings about that. But we just want to make sure that the conversation that we're having about the larger issue of redeveloping the Davis Straits is incorporated into the road plans as part, as part of a discussion to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity now. Because if they rebuild the road, then there's, there's no inserting it at that point. So we just want to make sure that we notified our friends at DPW about it so they're not unaware that this conversation's going on and just want to bring it to the board's attention. And at some point, I don't think it's a necessary decision, but at some point, the board wants to have more of a deeper conversation about it and perhaps make a recommendation that says, yeah, we think there should be on-street parking at this point. At this point, we just want to launch the flare that we've had this conversation, we're having this discussion. And the benefits that was discussed by the working group was that on-street parking in this section with the potential for bicycle and pedestrian accommodations on the, on the inside of those parking accommodations and pedestrian accommodations provides traffic calming, provides an economic development component, and it makes for, you know, a more pleasant pedestrian environment. And that was a discussion that Jim and Tony and I had. Tony lives around the corner, he walks his dog, and he says his dog is a good judge of what's a good place to walk.
He won't go there.
His dog is like, no, let's, let's not go there. So, so I know, my dog, and I had a lot of conversations, we used to go for walks at night. But always trust your dog.
So do you think you should invite the DPW to be part of your subgroup?
There was more to that meeting that we had, the working group. First of all.
Yeah, I just picked up a little piece.
First of all, we reaffirmed the design concepts that we wanted to see, how we just didn't want a block of buildings. We wanted to have some step backs and that kind of thing. So they're working on how to be able to make that happen with a, they're looking at, not an overlay district, but a change of zoning there. And that would, it can be more or less specific to get the concepts in there. So they're looking at that, they didn't want to go any further without having us affirm what we're looking at. And the on-street parking will be part of at least one concept that they're going to be presenting. Because where we go next, I believe if I am recalling correctly, is that they will do sketches of concepts that we can look at, not the full-blown, but they will be doing sketches so that we can look at it and say, yeah, that's what we had in mind. Or no, tweak that a little bit more because that's not exactly what we had in mind. And we talked about heights of buildings and some was, some that they were looking at were just simply too massive, it would not be friendly. And we may have to have that to get the density that we need. So all of this is up in the air right now.
And I think Worcester Court becoming more of a pedestrian way and a walkway all the way to the beach. And it could basically take the Boulevard feel of Worcester Court on the, on the southern end of it and maybe not, but try to extend it, maybe not be able to put the, you know, the median down the middle with the grass, but maybe on the sides to have the same feel that people say, hey, this is a great street. And maybe retail stores instead of the back of loading docks to the big stores that have the two thousand. You know, that, that, those are actually where people want to walk and shop and stop in and do something there instead of just being the back end of a giant mall. Because it's such a big part of the neighborhood. You know, if you, again, I would go back to if you take a look at what I copied from the Form Based Code. I was, I didn't write it, I took everything from the Form Based Code thing. They, they showed how you could just change a whole neighborhood just by making, having people and walking and changing instead of a brick wall and a loading dock, having people sitting there, the whole, the whole appearance. And I think that Worcester Court is the second tier. I mean, Davis Straits is important, but the next major artery is Worcester Court. And in my opinion, there might have to be another connection between the two to allow some of the flow.
And they were listening.
And they were listening to that. And no, those are all just really vague concepts right now. But if, if the state's planning to redo that highway and make it drive faster, we got to stop.
We have to stop it now.
That's a problem.
Now, in all honesty, I hate the on-street parking that we have downtown because I can't tell you how many times somebody has just opened their door, stepped out right in front without even looking and stood in the street.
Pat, you should slow down.
I am going slow and I've got good brakes, thankfully. I am going slow, and I've got good brakes, thankfully.
But you're going slow enough to react.
Yeah, but you don't break the door off.
And the point is that that does work.
Yeah.
Even though it's as annoying as all get out to have that happen.
And consider how many accidents happen in the sections that don't have the on-street parking.
Exactly.
But To- Tony mentioned, and I totally agree with him, from the retail rental component,
Yep.
that there's a huge difference in, in rent from the stores that where you can park and walk in to where you can't.
Mm-hmm.
And the differential is like twenty percent. It's a really big difference. And Tony really hammered it home in the walkthrough, and I totally agree, because I manage buildings up and down in both places, and I could show you the math. Downtown compared to there, I, I, I mean, it's, 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 it's more, it's more like thirty percent. It's a big number, and, and,
That was in the Davis Straits, uh, reset plan, the initial one they gave us, that the, the amount taken in value between a Dillingham Street corner and up to Stop and Shop corner, those smaller buildings all along there get a higher yield for their owners than the big plaza area.
Right, they, they, they mathematically proved the point that the yield is better.
Right.
And I, you know, it's, that's old numbers, but I totally agree with the numbers.
And some of those little places, uh, along across from AutoZone, if you could park on the street there, I think they'd do much better. Because I, I'm hesitant to go, pull into some of these places, because you never know if you're gonna get out.
Exactly.
If you have to turn around, if you decide that, uh, you don't wanna go there or something. But if you can just pull over to the side of the street, get out, check the menu or something, and then make a decision, uh, I think it would be beneficial.
Well, anyways, that was probably the biggest thing that I remember from all the different things. It's the most significant change.
I'd be really interested in having Tony Green talk about what he learned from planning Pine Hills, from the first part that he did, because he did it in sections to the last part he did, because they're quite different. You go up and drive through it. Just, you know, give him the floor and see what he says.
We're also looking at the difference here too, because all of those smaller buildings across from Stop and Shop,
Mm-hmm.
they, they may be triplexes or duplexes with businesses below and something. You can't do what you might do in the plaza, can't even begin to think about doing that. And so how does one access those buildings? That was part of the discussion too. No decisions, but the questions were put out. How can this happen?
And you know, my fear about those properties is being bought up by a box store, and there you have it.
Exactly.
So anyways, that was the, the main point from our discussion.
So our next meeting, uh, is likely going to be, uh, in the first of December, uh, certainly before the Festival of Our Lady of Guadalupe, which you know is December twelfth. Uh, but, uh, so we're looking, we tried to schedule something in November, to try to keep the inertia going. But between town meeting and Thanksgiving, there just wasn't a window for that. So we're working on setting up our next meeting for that, uh, first part of December, to sort of some of those initial sketches and,
So we'll hear from you regularly, it sounds like.
It really hasn't changed. It's something we were talking about for a long time.
Yeah, but it's,
Long time.
The good part is, is now we've got Tony and Outsider coming in, looking at it, and he seems to be on the same page. And what I would really like to see is us authorizing the architects to start drawing some buildings and giving examples. So people say, can, we can say what it's gonna look like. Right now, it's like, just a little concept. I'd really like to see some, okay, here's what it could look like.
Yeah, needs pictures.
Yep.
Yeah, and pretty soon, and a plan pretty soon. Um,
Adam, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, I just wanna note for you all, and also the people who are at home right now, both YouTube, or both, uh, videos are, uh, on FCTV YouTube channel. So if folks are interested and wanna review what happened, you just go right to FCTV on their YouTube channel, and you can find them. Uh, their la- latest video was just posted today.
Oh, okay, great.
Big shout out to FCTV for that.
The same thing you do to watch a planning board meeting, you go to the Planning Board's website, and you click on the, like, this is videos of meetings. It takes you to FCTV, you go to the Planning Board section, you'll see all the Planning Board meetings, including the working group meetings for Davis Straits.
Lovely.
And my video's still out there, Density Done Right on YouTube, it pops up right away, it's still there.
And still good. Anything else on the working group? Okay, then, uh, general correspondence. In addition to, uh, Bob Amet's letter, uh, it was not addressed,
Precinct meetings.
Yeah, we're gonna do precinct meetings. Um, uh, I individually got a, um, an email from Doug Brown from the, uh, Planning Board setting, saying he was writing, not as a select person, but as a, uh, a resident of the town. And he had received Bob Amet's, uh, letter, and he too was concerned about the no-change vis- business, that we had said no-change, and he would like to see no-change. But I don't think we had any other correspondence.
Uh, actually, there was one from, uh, Maria Curtis.
Oh, excuse me, yes.
Who hoped that we might include, uh, karting, uh, as in go-karts, in the recodification. And I think much like the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago with, uh, Petersons about TDR and amending the TDR, I think the reply to the Petersons was, well, that's all well and good and likely a Phase Two issue, but not within the realm of recodification.
Exactly. Right. Out of curiosity, what, what is the size of that lot that she's interested in?
It's an acre.
One acre?
Yeah. Forty thousand, around forty thou- I've tried to do ten things with it, it's,
Oh, that's right, you have.
Yeah, it's, it's, it, it now is overlooked by your housing project that looks right down on it.
Well, and it backs up to all of Alma Road, doesn't it?
No, 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 nowhere near Alma Road. No, it's on,
What's that road that's right behind it?
Springbars Road.
No, there's Springbars, goes in front of it.
No, but I know,
Worcester Court is on the corner of Worcester Court and Springbars. What's the one just beyond?
There's a new street there that's called Candle Lane, that, that has twenty-eight units going on it for sale right now. But it's, that's hundreds of yards. It's hundreds of yards away. Candle Lane is hundreds of yards away from that.
Those houses will be how close to that lot?
Hundreds of yards. The, the ones that'll be really close are the, the, uh, the ones on, uh, the, the town just built with the Fountain Housing Authority, they'll be overlooking this lot. I mean, they're literally looking right down on it. It's much, much more of an impact.
Ah, okay.
This one was requested to go from Peter Clark. We had it in our folder, but it was requested to go in the correspondence folder.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, I'd forgotten this. Folks, this is from Peter Clark, did you have a chance to look at it? He's concerned that one of the, um, charter review, he wasn't concerned, somebody else brought it to his attention, that the wording in it might in some way impinge upon, um, our, uh, our realm of planning and hand some of it over to the select board. It was not their intention, and it doesn't read that way to me, and I emailed Tom about it.
Doesn't read that way to him, so.
That is, that is in, uh, in the role of making recommendations to town meeting. Would this charter change impede the planning board's ability to make recommendations to town meeting on zoning articles?
Right.
The answer is no, because the state law requires the planning board to make recommendations.
So it doesn't put the selectmen involved, the planning board, on that? Because I, actually, I am concerned about that, but it's a question of,
So, so if you have a, if you have a zoning article that we have a hearing on, uh, the planning board has to give a report to town meeting and make a recommendation on those articles. If the planning board doesn't make a recommendation, then those articles cannot be moved at town meeting until, A, I'll have to check the numbers, until forty-five days after the hearing is closed, uh, or, uh, the planning board makes a recommendation. So the planning board sort of has this essential pocket veto, where you could say, uh, we're not going to make a recommendation on this zoning article, and that zoning article can't be voted at town meeting until the board makes a recommendation, or forty-five days passes from the end of the hearing. So in effect, you cannot bring an article, a zoning article, to town meeting without the planning board's recommendation.
That's true, but what about a situation where you're going to the Cape Cod Commission, and the planning board's all set for something, and the selectmen decide to override them and go to the Cape Cod Commission, have them change what they want? Uh, that's what I'm concerned about, and this seems to be, that, that, I think that, that's really the heart of the matter, because that's exactly what happened on, on Main Street, uh, with the Marriott that was, was going there. And the, the selectmen came in and went to the neighborhood and said, that's what they want, that the subcommittee was all set, ready to approve, to have a hearing for it, and they, they killed it, the Cape Cod Commission, to change it based on the selectmen. And it took us out of, uh, s- uh, special permit world, as Brian used to say, and put us into forty B world. And you know what forty B world gets? We get fifty feet, ten-foot set, five-foot setbacks, and a hundred and ten units. And that's because our selectmen overrode the planning board. And I do have a concern about that.
Well, as far as referrals go to, uh, to, to refer something to the Cape Cod Commission for a development or regional impact, for that review by the Cape Cod Commission, there's a broad authority by lots of folks. See, a budding town can say, we're concerned about that, and they can take it to, so,
But the selectmen actually over, overrode the planning board.
I'm not familiar with that particularly.
I am.
I know, I'm, I'm,
And you will be familiar with it as it gets built.
So precinct meetings?
But Jim, did you want then to not support?
I just, I understand the question. I'm concerned about it. And o- o- obviously, uh, Peter says it's not there, but I read it and said, wait a minute, this is, looks like it's eroding us a little bit. Because I'm really concerned of what they did and what they've done in the past on that particular lantern lane, and how this town will be living with that decision for the rest of our lives.
Well, I think the only thing we could do as a board, if, if you wanted to move it and see if anyone agrees with you, is to object to it at town meeting.
I don't know if I object to it, I'm just bringing it up that it's something that should be questioned. If, he seems to think, oh, no, it's no problem. I just read his letter once, I tell you, I have reservations if maybe I can, maybe I can be talked out with you all. Does anyone else feel the concern? Or if I, if it's only me, I'm okay, I could, I'll be, I don't wanna really,
They changed the wording.
Be Don Coyote here charging at windmills, but,
They changed the wording from what it had originally been, that would undercut us, definitively undercut, um, to this is more of, well, they have the right to give their own opinion.
That's all it sounded like.
Well, if you, you all agree, I'm just bringing the point up. I, as soon as I saw that, that's what came to mind.
Oh, yeah. We were bitten.
Snick, steak bite.
I don't hear your colleagues, you know, stepping up to that one. So precinct meetings, um, who is, I'm definitely going to five and six. So that would be on the Thursday of November fourth. Is there anyone who's available to go on, on November tenth to precinct one and two?
I'll be there.
So that'd be Paul.
Somebody do eight and nine, 'cause I can't do it.
You can't, you cannot do it? On November third, I could probably do it. Is anyone else available for November third?
Uh, I am.
John, you're gonna go?
Where, where's it at?
Um, Navigator.
On the third?
Yeah.
Seven o'clock?
Yep.
Okay.
Then Tuesday, the ninth, we're meeting then, aren't we?
Mm-hmm.
So none of us is available then for precinct four and seven. And November fourth, um, I'll be at five and six. So is anyone available, else available on the fourth to go to the Candy Center for precinct three?
I suppose I could, I don't want to.
No, I know you don't want to.
Six, but,
Oh, but that's my precinct.
I know.
So Pat, you're gonna go?
I might be able to, I don't know if I have CPC that night or not.
Oh.
I'll, I'll find out. I, I don't think I do. I have it, I have it this week, so I don't think I have it next week too.
So you're willing to go to two. Thank you, John.
Did I say that?
Yeah, I think you did.
That, that's the fourth?
Yeah, I put your name right down. The fourth at the Candy Center, and the third at the Navigator. And nobody's going for four and seven.
Because we can't. That's happened before.
Yep, they've done that. Future agenda items.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Oh, Paul, yeah.
These precinct meetings are in-person meetings, obviously.
Yep.
What's the status of town meeting? Is that in-person?
I haven't heard anything other than in-person.
Yeah, it's gonna be, I think at Lawrence, is it at Lawrence School? I think so.
The warrant book hasn't come out, so I,
No, not yet. They didn't, they're not printing it till the,
We have a date, but,
Twenty-nine.
It's gonna be indoors?
Lawrence School, Memorial Auditorium.
Upside down.
Yeah, the, the, the warrant book is available online.
Oh, I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, you can go to the town meeting site of the website and,
That's at Lawrence School.
They're gonna mail me one? Okay.
Okay. Lawrence School, Memorial Auditorium.
Yeah. Future agenda items.
I have one.
Okay.
I would like to discuss what the planning board's role is on uses of property. Not just, I thought our role was site plan and design review, but I, I just wanna make sure that, that we, are we also, I, I think a lot of town committees get involved in uses and other things, and I don't think uses is something we, we should be doing. I, and, and I just wanted to have a discussion on that and make sure you all agree with me. If you don't, then I'll be quiet. But I'd like to have an open discussion about that.
Okay, so we all should look at the state statute and our own zoning bylaws beforehand?
No, I just, what, if we, if we need to consult it, I mean, I, I'm only going with what our practices have been in the past. I always thought the planning board does, does site plan, review, and, and, and planning as far as, uh, parking, safety,
Drainage and that.
Drainage, and design review. I didn't think we got involved in use.
We don't, we don't. That's been the rule.
But I would like to have, to affirm that, because I, I, there's some discussion I'd like to have about that.
Okay, we can do that?
Yep.
Okay, we'll get tutored on that. John?
A, a different one after you finish that.
We finished?
Okay, we, we had talked about having a, a meeting regarding outside consultants.
Oh.
I thought it was gonna be this evening, but didn't see it on the agenda.
Fifty-three G, but I think that that was for after-town meeting.
Okay.
Is what we did. We have kicked that one along. And Peter McConaty's gonna come. And we're also having, um, Charlie McCaffrey come after-town meeting to talk to us about zoning changes for, related to coastal resiliency. But therefore, they would not be for, uh, November ninth, it would be for meetings after that. Paul, did you have any items?
You skipped announcements.
Not intentionally.
Announcements.
Can I make an announcement?
Yes.
Pam, if you're listening, the entire board wishes you happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Pam.
I didn't help her birthday.
How'd you know that?
You cut her off. No, I talked to her, I, I talked to her afterwards, and she sort of forgave me.
Oh. She told you when her birthday was?
No, she did not.
Oh.
But,
I didn't ask her how old.
Good man. How did you know when her birthday is?
And, and as you also saw in your correspondence, uh, the belated announcement that, uh, Michaela has added, uh, one person to her household, Colette, uh, and, uh, she's doing very well. Uh, she and I talked a couple of times, uh, not about stuff she needs to get done, but the stuff that is great, but so, uh,
Well, tonight she, we, we all signed a card to her. We're aware that we were the last to know, that this was kept, you know, really secret from us, but we certainly are very grateful for the news, and she looks wonderful. So that's really great. Yeah, she's really recovering nicely. But won't be back for quite a while.
Uh, twelve weeks, I believe, is what you were received for, uh, maternity leave.
In Massachusetts.
Uh, most of the civilized world, more, but twelve weeks in Massachusetts and, and the country. So that would be back, uh, the first of the year.
Good, I'm glad she's going to have that. That'll be lovely.
May I move adjournment?
Would you?
Yes, I would. I'd move that we adjourned.
Second.
On favor?
All right.
We didn't have to do a road call on that.